Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 5th, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll, please?
Certainly. Honorable Mayor Schoenheider.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Beidler.
Here.
Alderman Pandeleon is absent. Alderman Newman is absent. Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Adelman.
Here.
Alderman Moreno.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a form.
Thank you very much. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is comments by mayor. I did want to make one comment. If you are here by chance this evening for an item that's on the agenda later under new business, dealing with a winter club, don't need to stay because that motion or that item has been tabled until the October 19th meeting, two weeks from this evening. So feel free, if you are here, to stay as long as you like. I'm not kicking you out, but in case you're here for only that reason, you're welcome to leave and we'll see you on the 19th. My first item is a couple of resolutions and a proclamation. I actually have one resolution tonight of appreciation for employee Kevin Issel, and I'd like to read it if I could. Whereas Kevin W. Issel has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since August 23rd, 1988, and whereas Kevin W. Issel honorably retired from the city on October 16th, 2015, whereas Kevin W. Issel served in the following positions during his dedicated career: firefighter/paramedic from 1988 to 1993, promoted to lieutenant paramedic in 1994, appointed to captain paramedic in 2005, and appointed to deputy chief in 2007. Whereas during his career, he served as a public educator, hazardous materials technician, county trench rescue team, department training officer, the city's ESDA coordinator, and the Illinois Fire Service Intelligence Officer. Whereas Kevin W. Issel was awarded several honorable mentions from Lake Forest residents and received several certifications through the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council on behalf of the administration and residents of the community hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Kevin W. Issel for a public service faithfully performed. And be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to Kevin W. Issel with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the October 5th, 2015, meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. The motion's approved. Kevin, would you?
Well, sir.
(laughter)
Did he?
Yeah.
(inaudible)
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 Oh, thank you. Thank you.
I'll only take a minute, but on behalf of my family and myself, what a wonderful career it's been. What an amazing city to work for, wonderful staff, great teamwork, but in particular, these fire guys you see in the back of the room. It's really an amazing organization to work with. I will treasure my experience and knowledge that I've gained from them and take that on into my future career. Just very grateful to have had this opportunity. Thank you very much. (applause)
That's good. That's what the beer was for?
Congratulations.
Now, you didn't tell everybody where you were going, so in case they're out there that can come visit you.
Aspen Snowbells.
Oh. (laughter)
We take back all the good things we said. Kevin, best of luck. For someone who's been here since 1988, when we say that we're going to miss someone, I think that's an understatement. So we wish you all the best, much success, great happiness, and all the best in your next move. You will be missed. Next item on the agenda, under mayor's comments, is proclamation, and I'd like to read it if I may, relative to Harvey D. Kane Day on October 9, 2015. Whereas Harvey D. Kane, a 1952 graduate of Lake Forest College, was born on campus in the former Alice Home Hospital, the son of Lake Forest College graduates Ruth Dunning, class of 1929, and Harvey Kane, class of 1930, who also served as a board member of the college in the 1960s. And whereas Kane is among a long line of graduates of Lake Forest College and residents of the city of Lake Forest and members of the Kane family, who lived for nearly a century on Illinois Road, across the street from Farwell Field, in the home Kane's grandfather built in the early 1900s. And whereas Kane double majored in chemistry and biology at Lake Forest College, earned his M.D. at Northwestern University and his J.D. at Lincoln Law School. And whereas being a long-distance biker, runner, and swimmer, at the age of 85, Kane embarked upon a nearly 3,000-mile bicycle trek on Route 66 across the United States to arrive in the city where he was born in time for the Lake Forest College Homecoming Celebration on October 8th through the 10th, 2015. And whereas Kane began his journey from his hometown in Sacramento, California, in his quest to raise scholarship money for future foresters, and along the way pedaled across eight states, three time zones, attained an elevation of nearly 7,000 feet, and endured desert heat, rural isolation, and city traffic to reach his birth state of Illinois. And whereas Lake Forest College, to honor Kane for his extraordinary effort, will host a celebratory bike ride at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, October 9th, 2015, followed by a reception where the community will have an opportunity to meet Kane and hear his story. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Donald P. Schoenheider, Mayor of the city of Lake Forest, do proclaim Friday, October 9th, 2015, as Harvey D. Kane Day, and encourage residents to partake in this historic moment for our city and for Lake Forest College. Could I ask if Mr. Phil Hood, are you here? Phil?
I don't know. When I wrote it, I wrote it off my laptop. It was in my inbox, in my Dropbox. Can I go back to the email?
At age 85, he rides across the United States. It's pretty incredible.
Thank you for this proclamation. Yeah, this is a really big week at the college. We're expecting a record number of alumni back this weekend. We have over 800 alumni registered, and one of the real highlights is going to be Harvey Kane's arrival. When he approached us last November, I was actually with him in San Francisco, and he had this idea, and, you know, I was taken aback, and I said, "Really? 3,000 miles? You'd like to make this trek?" And so he started in July, and we've had a lot of fun with this. Year-to-date, we're about 200 alumni donors above where we were a year ago, and much of that's attributed to how he's inspired our alumni base. And I know that we haven't seen the end of the gifts that are going to come in through this, with so many people having the opportunity to interact with Harvey over the weekend. The weekend does begin on Thursday evening. Our annual Oppenheimer lecture will begin at 7:30 in the Presbyterian Church. Sherry Turkle, who's a renowned social psychologist and who wrote the New York Times bestseller Alone Together about people's relationship with technology, will be featured on Thursday evening. And also just want to bring to everyone's attention that on Saturday, our Forester Fan Fest will be held over by our Sports and Recreation Center beginning at noon. The whole community is invited to that. Harvey will be around for that. Food and drinks will be available for people. And then our 2:00 p.m. kickoff of the football game, Harvey will actually be riding his bike out to the 50-yard line for the coin flip with the game ball. So it's going to be a really great weekend back on the campus. Thanks for this proclamation, and we appreciate the community's support. Thanks.
Thank you, Phil, very much. Have a great weekend. Looking forward to being a part of it. And that ends my comments by mayor. Next item on the agenda, comments by city manager Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. This evening I have no report.
Okay, thank you. Item number three on the agenda this evening, comments by council members. First item under the Public Works Committee, consideration of an ordinance establishing the city of Lake Forest Special Service Area Number 40, Regency Lane Area Sanitary Improvement Project, presented by Alderman Kathy Waldeck, chairman of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll go through a brief recap of this project. I know you've all seen it before, so I'll try to move through it pretty quickly here. As we all know, city staff has been working with the Regency Lane neighbors regarding the possibility of installing sanitary sewers. And an SSA, or Special Service Area, is typically the mechanism used to fund these infrastructure improvements. This would be a city-funded project. The money would be paid back over 20 years. It would be divided equally amongst the 15 parcels at a 3.04% interest. There have been a number of meetings with residents, and the majority of residents have signed a petition endorsing the SSA. Pursuant to state law, a public hearing was opened on August 17th. Pursuant to law, residents have 60 days after that time to file a letter of objection, and at least 51% of the property owners and 51% of the electors in the proposed area must formally object to the SSA in order for it to not be adopted. October 16th ends that 60-day period. We have not had any objections to date. Page three of the agenda goes through the cost breakdown, the total cost of the project, the total cost per lot, and the annual cost per lot. There is a cap on the amount annually that each homeowner can be asked to pay or contribute over the 20-year life of this project. As you may recall, on August 3rd, city council approved the proposing ordinance for this SSA. Tonight, we are asking to approve first reading of the establishing ordinance. We will then return for final approval after the 60-day objection period has run, which would be our next city council meeting on Monday, October 19th, I think, is the date. So given that, are there any questions regarding this first part of the action?
Questions for Alderman Waldeck?
Kathy, there's no change from the last time that this came before us, is there?
Are you asking if there's any change between the proposing ordinance and this ordinance? I think there may have been one, and I see Vic, and I'll turn it over to you. I think there was one change, and that was highlighted in your packet, but I'm going to pass it over to Vic to clarify that.
Actually, this is the first time you've seen this ordinance. It may look a lot like the proposing ordinance, but it has a different function. The first one was the kickoff. It set off our maximum authorizations. This will be the actual ordinance to establish it, and there are some technical differences between the two documents. In terms of the thresholds of authority that were in the proposing ordinance, those are the same as in this one at this point. There's still some refinement that will potentially occur between now and the final reading of this. As we get a little more information, the next item, we'll talk a little bit about that. And we also will have, in the final ordinance that you'll be considering in two weeks, the ability to make final tweaks even after the project is done, so we have a more refined number as to the final tax.
Does that answer your question, Jack?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will ask...
Right, hold on. Like, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay, and if not?
If not, we are seeking, I would ask then for approval of first reading for the ordinance establishing the city of Lake Forest Special Service Area Number 40, Regency Lane Area Sanitary Improvement Project.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Passes?
Moving on to the second piece of this, we are also at this time tonight seeking award of construction contracts and engineering oversight agreements for this SSA. This project went out to bid. The bids were opened at the end of September. The three bids that we received, which are in your packet as well, were all higher than our engineering estimate. We were able to further lower the amount of the lowest, of the low bidder, which was R.A. Mancini, in several ways. First of all, by, we decided that we could do some of the work in-house, and also by contracting directly with the landscaper, which is Perez, and Peter Baker for the asphalt. So using those two, by those two means, we were able to lower the original amount of the bid from 828,000 to 665,000. Also, as typically is found in a project like this, staff is also requesting a 10% non-contractor-specific contingency fee. Due to the aggressive construction schedule, we are seeking approval of the construction contracts and the engineering agreement tonight. Our intent would be to complete the paving before Baker's plant closes, which is typically sometime in November, perhaps the third week of November or so, and approving the contracts tonight allows us to do so. If this project doesn't get paved this fall, we will then have to put in temporary asphalt, and if we can avoid putting the temporary asphalt in, we will save approximately $29,000 on the cost of the project for the homeowners. So what we're asking to do is to go ahead and approve the base contract to Mancini, as well as the contracts to Perez and Peter Baker, and the 10% non-contractor-specific contingency fund, as well as the oversight engineering, which is Geewald Hamilton. So we're asking to get that all in place so that we can move forward as quickly as possible on the 19th of October.
Questions for Kathy? Vic?
There was one comment that I shared with the Public Works Committee that the council ought to be aware of. This schedule proposes two, or is based on two assumptions. One is that when the establishing ordinance comes forward to you on the 19th, that you approve it. And that one's the easy one. And two, because of the desire to accelerate everything, after tonight's motion, if it's approved, staff intends to move forward with the contract. That means we have a 10-day period where there could be an objection to the SSA. There is a risk, you can measure in your own judgment, the Public Works Committee thought it was modest, that the contract, after being established, won't be able to go forward if the SSA is objected to. So knowing that is part of what you have to consider as you vote tonight.
Any other questions? Kathy, or for Vic?
The last piece, I'm not sure I understood. Do we have, is, do we have any monies at risk here? And if so, how much?
If we move forward and the SSA is objected to, there will be some activities that are expected from Mancini during that 10-day period. Part of it may be ordering of materials. The materials, the public works staff is confident could be used for other projects, so it's just a matter of buying stuff in advance. There may be some soft costs incurred, and those might be then at risk. Magnitude, I don't have a good number on that. I don't know if Mike wants to venture a guess, but...
Can I just say, I mean, I don't want to drag this thing up.
The feeling is it's the minimus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We're confident that it seems to be going forward.
I think the other thing, Jack, that, you know, and there's no guarantees, but 60% of the homeowners signed a petition endorsing the SSA in order for it to not be approved. That's so awkward to say that, but I don't know how to say it better, for it not to be... We need 51%, obviously lower than 60%, of the property owners, and in addition to that, 51% of the electors, because there may be more than one elector in a household, but one, only one property owner in a household. So both of those things have to be, there has to be a formal objection by both those groups by this, by October 16th. Could that happen? It could. It could.
That's fine. Let's go.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public here to comment on this? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion for the approval of the following Regency Lane Area Sanitary Sewer Improvement Contracts. The base contract, Ari Mancini, the amount of $665,727. Perez Landscaping, the amount of $6,720. Peter Baker &amp; Sons, in the amount of $46,142. The ability to, for any unforeseen circumstances, provide a 10% non-contractor-specific contingency of $71,859 to be approved for use with any of the three contractors above, and Geewald Hamilton for engineering oversight in the amount of $35,000. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Adelman.
Aye.
Alderman Moreno.
Aye.
Six yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And the next item, and not to let you off the hook, consideration and approval to engage the professional services of Alfred Benish and Company, Leggett Architects, to complete the Phase II construction documents for the East train station, Stage III interior improvements, also presented by Alderman Waldeck.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. As you all recall, the city has received an ITEP grant for over $2 million of federal funds for interior and exterior restoration of the east side train station. Those funds are administered in an 80/20, split with 80% being funded by the grant and 20% of the responsibility of the city. That money, that federal money, also runs through IDOT, the state agency. That's how it gets to us. We completed Phase I, which was the roof, which was completed with this grant, and we're now moving on to Stage II, which is the exterior, and Stage III, which is the interior of the train station. The city is now seeking, or city staff is now suggesting, with the endorsement of the Public Works Committee, approval to hire an engineering firm, which is Benish, who will then subcontract with an architectural firm, which is Leggett. Benish is being recommended because they have a lot of experience in dealing with IDOT. They are very familiar with the processes and with the paperwork involved in getting a project through IDOT. The architect, Leggett, has significant experience in the building of train stations and in the renovation of historic train stations. The bulk of the improvements to the interior are mechanical in nature. They are in the nature of electrical upgrades, HVAC upgrades, making the station ADA compliant, upgrading, renovating the bathrooms, making those ADA compliant as well, and possible replacement of the floor. The next question becomes one of schedule and timeline, and your packet outlines three options. Option number one, would it be funding these improvements completely through the ITEP grant, which includes the 80/20 split? Option number two would be to fund it partially ourselves, and option number three would be to fund it completely ourselves. And what is being recommended here tonight is option number two, in which we would expend an additional $20,000 of our funds, would, it would allow us to finish up to three months sooner. And that may not sound like a very long period of time, but when you're looking at an end date of February or March of 2016, that three months that pushes it up to, say, December of '20 or late November of 2016, becomes very important indeed, because during that time, those cold winter months, to have our commuters outside the train station and not be able to use the interior of the train station, it is, it is something that's significant, and that's definitely a consideration. There is one other consideration here as well, and that is the historic nature of the building. As many of you may remember, the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation has been very much involved, very intricately involved with the planning of this project, and in fact, generated a document, a Historic Structures Report, a very comprehensive document relating to the east side train station renovation. We met today with members of the Preservation Foundation, one of whom is here tonight, who I'm going to call upon in a moment, along with the architects. And we had, I think, a very productive, very, very good meeting, which was then carried over to our Public Works Committee meeting. And I think we now have an agreement amongst the parties that the Preservation Foundation will very much have a seat at the table when it comes to this project, and will work hand in hand with Leggett Architects. So there is an assurance here, I think, or we feel sure that this is a project that will not only be done expeditiously, but done right. And it's very, very important to all of us, I know, to get this right. So without further ado, I'm going to ask a few people to come up and say a few words. We do have representatives from Leggett Architects, and if you're willing, I'd ask you to come up and perhaps give a short presentation to the city council along the lines of what you presented us tonight. And then if he's willing, I'm going to call upon Art Miller to come up and say a few words on behalf of the Preservation Foundation as well, so...
Thank you, Alderman Waldeck. My name is Mark Rhodey with Leggett Architects, and joining me tonight is Bill Epp from Benish, and we've partnered together to bring you what we think to be a really solid team for your project, recognizing the need for an architect with train station experience, as well as somebody with an expertise in IDOT work. And we've done a number of IDOT projects ourself, but Benish really has a good handle on that, and I'm going to let Bill touch on that in a minute. We have been in practice for over 50 years. We have probably done close to 30 metro stations alone, number of historic renovations, as well as new stations. We've done several multimodal stations. We're getting ready to start a large project in Rockford. We're doing a rehab of an old Sears warehouse into a train station and hotel in Moline, the Quad Cities. So we're very well experienced in this type of work. I've just finished up a very similar project to yours, also using grant funding for LaGrange. It's called the Stone Avenue Station. We're very aware of the historic nature of the station. We did meet with Art and his group today, and I think we hit it off very nicely, and we're looking forward to working with them. One thing that we think sets Leggett apart is that we're very collaborative. We feel that it's best to engage everybody at the get-go, at the very first meeting. We don't want to be the architect that, you know, goes back, designs, and comes back and says, "What do you think?", and it's a reaction. It's more, we want you on board from the beginning. So we're welcome to invite anybody who wants to take part of it, city staff, you know, residents, Preservation Foundation, to make this a very collaborative process. So we think that's good. That's the architectural side. Now, on the technical paperwork side, I'm going to turn it over to Bill, and we can kind of continue on.
Sure. So Bill Epp with Alfred Benish, and yeah, as Mark mentioned, we're on the team for two reasons. One, we'll be the structural engineers for the limited amount of structural that's anticipated, but we're going to help work through the Illinois DOT process. And we do, Benish does millions of dollars of work every year with Illinois DOT and with federally funded projects. We've already been in contact, as well as your staff been in contract, contact with Bureau Local Roads to try and see what we can do to get this thing moving forward. And, yeah, again, we do, we do a tremendous amount of this work.
Thanks very much. Art, would you mind stepping up and saying a few words?
Hi, I'm Art Miller, president of the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation, but also 169 Wildwood Road. They're coming to get us. Yes, we met with... anticipated, but we're going to help work through the Illinois DOT process. And we do, Benish does millions of dollars of work every year with Illinois DOT and with federally funded projects. We've already been in contact, as well as your staff been in contract, contact with Bureau Local Roads, to try and see what we can do to get this thing moving forward. And, yeah, again, we do, we do a tremendous amount of this work.
Thanks very much. Art, would you mind stepping up and saying a few words?
Hi, I'm Art Miller, president of the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation, but also 169 Wildwood Road. They're coming to get us. Yes, we, we met with the group. We, what we did is we had a project done in 2008, 2009, to assess carefully the, the needs of that structure, to figure out the history of it, and what, for some possible directions going forward. We've met with the architects. We're pretty confident that they're knowing about the same things that we want them to know about. They've worked on stations that some of us whizzed past in the morning at Winnetka, Hubbard Woods, Glencoe, Wimmet, and things like that. So, they, they're used to our area of doing these things. Because this is a project that's partly grant funds, it's not going to be able to do everything we want. So, we want to be sure in this process that we're not doing any things that have to be then kind of undone, or done around, or redone at a later stage. We want this to work smoothly, so that as we go forward with other processes, we'll be able to do that. I don't think any, anyone is too sanguine about these bids coming in way low. These grants were written a long time ago, I think when the Dow Jones Industrial Average was about $10,000. And since then, building has picked up quite a bit, and so there may be some negative effects on these costs. So, we'll be working with them to think about what we can do now, what we need to put forward into the future, but I think we're comfortable that we'll have a good working relationship with them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Any questions?
Questions for Kathy, Mike?
I'd just like to comment, it sounds like there's an excellent team in place to make this the best possible train station we can hope for.
I would just echo that. It's very reassuring, Art. You know how much respect you command in this community, and certainly in this room. And, and, and I think we see you as fair-minded, but, but above all, you care about Lake Forest and its character. And so, if this feels like something the Preservation Foundation can, can be happy about, and especially if you're, you're going to work together, I think that's going to make, that's going to guarantee you a much better experience in this community as well. We, we pass judgment on the quality of things. We, we just do. And it's part of who we are, and so we have pretty high standards, and it sounds like that they're going to be met, so, well done.
Anything else?
I, I agree with those comments. However, I am struggling with $20,000 for a month and a half to three months.
Bob, can you speak to exactly what that $20,000 is going to be used for?
Yeah, and quite honestly, I think this came up at a meeting we had maybe back in August, because one of my biggest concerns, number one, is dealing with IDOT and the bureaucracy of IDOT, and how that can slow down, and, and that's part of one of the reasons that we selected the team that we did. But I think also the, the timeframe, from my standpoint, the worst thing that I thought could happen was that we're in the middle of this renovation and winter sets in, because then all the commuters are standing outside during this period of time from December on. So, really, the staff reached out to the consultant and said, "How can we try and use some of the time that I don't want to call as wasted, but basically is sitting down at IDOT for them to review these contracts and agreements for a period of about 60 to 90 days, and get a jumpstart on this, so that we could take, pick up two months at the beginning of the project and save it on the back end of the project?". And so, they came back, and basically, the $20,000 will get us to 30% design, which will put us collectively in a good position, because it will give us different concepts of what we can do and can't do, and pricing, how much work will get done or not get done. And so, really, it was just a feeling of, is it worth it, $20,000, to be able to guarantee that this project will get done before fall weather sets in in 2016? Or if not, as you can see from the option one, which is using all ITEP money, no city money, that potentially pushes it into January, February of 2017.
And is it those designs and concepts that will really allow Art and his group to sit down at the table with the architect and discuss, you know, delve into the details?
Yeah, I might also add that it's not necessarily going to get lost, because the $20,000 that's, the city would front is $20,000. It would not come out of the ITEP grant, so there would be $20,000 additional in the ITEP grant to actually do work within the interior renovation. So, it isn't money that's just being thrown away. It's almost like a shuffling of money where the city's actually giving more upfront, but then that will allow more work to get done on the back end.
Just so I understand, so the three months is January the 1st. The month and a half is a week or so before Thanksgiving. Correct?
Yeah, I think it's November 15th of what are expected if we go this route.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Well, I'm not going to stand out by myself on this thing, but I am still struggling with it.
Anything else? Any other questions?
I would just say, Jack, I mean, normally, I'm pretty fiscally conservative, but in this case, that is a train station that people I know, I would have to say, you know, as a word one, Alderman, I believe I speak for my people when I say winters are very cold here, and that's a, it's important that that be usable. There's just no alternative there. There's not, I mean, I don't know where else you go. And we can't take everybody who uses Lake Forest. We can't send them all down to Fort Sheridan, and the schedule's even different there. I feel like this is a very important community amenity, and to have it open in the winter months is, is going to be pretty significant. So, that's just, just from, from the word one, East Lake Forest perspective, and I don't want to get into a tussle over that.
I trust then you will owe me one.
Okay.
With that, I'll move on. I'll move on to asking for any public comment on this. Seeing none, then I'd like to ask for a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a consultant agreement for design services with Alfred Benish &amp; Co. Leggett Architects contingent upon IDOT concurrence for Phase II design engineering for the Central Business District Train Station Stage III improvements interior in an amount of $56,321 to include the authorization to expend, if necessary, an additional amount not to exceed 5% of the contract award for unforeseen change orders that may occur during the administration, and to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Alfred Benish &amp; Co. Leggett Architects to proceed with the development of preliminary Phase II architectural design documents for an expense not to exceed $20,000. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six ye, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy. I'm sure Alderman Reisenberg will be in front of the train station on November 15th. See if it's open.
Without my gloves.
Without his gloves.
And I'll be there with my gloves.
And I would second the, the comments of Alderman Adelman. It's a great team effort. We appreciate everyone and the Preservation Foundation for their great involvement and their contribution, so thank you. Next item on the agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on non-agenda items. Dave?
I just came in on the Empire Building today. Too bad you didn't stop at the Lake Forest Station. Oh, you can stop at the Lake Forest Station that day. I wasn't even going to mention that. But thank you.
Dave, would you state your...
Now, I have to fill out another one of those forms.
Dave, would you, please state your name and address, please.
David Mattoon, 1547 North Sheridan Road. And on this part, I'm a member of Operation Lives, or a volunteer with Operation Lifesaver, which is train safety organization, and a member of the DuPage Railroad Safety Council. So, Metro had a safety blitz in West Lake Forest, and I want to extend our congratulations for the marvelous support of the city. Metro has about 50 of these station blitzes, and does about another 20 during Illinois Railroad Safety Week, and I've been on about 30 of them. And it's very rare that we see all the participation that we, here, the mayor was here, the police chief, fire chief, deputy police chief, many police officers from the, both shifts, I mean, seven to nine, and, you know, five to seven and seven to nine. And as you can see here, and I didn't have time to reformat that, we got a email from Hillary Council, who's the Director of Safety. I sit next to him on the DuPage Railroad Safety Council, so I think this is a genuine expression of his regard. It says, "While I was unable to attend the safety, station safety blitz yesterday, I would like to thank everyone on behalf of Metro for their efforts in making the Lake Forest Milwaukee District North Line Station Safety Blitz a huge success. Educating the public on the importance of behaving safely around the railroad is a very important component of preventing accidents and incidences. Your willingness to partner with Metro on this important initiative is greatly appreciated." And he quotes Helen Keller, "Alone we can do so little, together we can do so much." And while Hillary wasn't actually at the station, his subordinate Larry Green was on the phone to him during their, oh, Friday Staff Infection Meeting, where they discussed every plans. So, I'm sure that this is a heartfelt thanks from Hillary. Okay, and then, and then, without my safety vest on, I want to mention this upcoming talk we're having this Friday, October 9th. It's more or less a repeat of the one that we gave in April of the 1857 plat. It's going to be Friday, October 9th, at the Lily Reed Memorial Chapel from 1 to 2. And Art and I are going to present the, the, it says here, the original plat mentioning north and middle campus. Well, that's, it's really this, essentially the same talk. This is just, the description's more oriented to the homecoming there at, at Lake Forest College. So, if for some reason you weren't able to make the April meeting, you'll now have to come up with a different reason to not make this meeting. Also, from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Duran Art Institute, Duran Art Gallery Open House. The Duran Art Institute is the one at Catty Corner from First Presbyterian Church. We're going to have the same plats that we had displayed at the April meeting, so that's another chance for you to view those. And my final comment here is from the U.S. Secretary of the Interior, Sally Jewell. He issued a change order, changing the name of Mount McKinley to DeNali on August 28th, 2015. Jewell said the change had been a long time coming. So, I leave you with the question now, what about Depot Avenue? Which was changed McKinley Road. Thank you.
Poor McKinley.
Anyone else from the public here to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Items, items for omnibus vote consideration. We have this evening six of them, as we always do. If any council member would like to take any of them individually, we may do so. Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion to approve the entire omnibus at the end. Item number one, approval of the September 8, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number two, approval of the September 21, 2015 city council meeting minutes. Number three, the check register for the period August 29 to September 25, 2015. Number four, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Building Review Board, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number five, consideration of a motion and an ordinance approving recommendations from the Plan Commission and the Building Review Board for the Lake Forest Townhomes, approval of a motion, and first reading of an ordinance, and if desired by the council, final approval. And consideration of an ordinance amending Sections 50 and 51 of the City Code, bringing to solid waste and water, second reading, final approval. Anyone care to take any of those individually? Vic?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there were two modest corrections, or adjustments that I suggested to the minutes, so if it might be as amended on the minutes.
Very well. Anyone else? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the omnibus with comments made by council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Adelman?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
Six ye, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances. We have no ordinances this evening. Number seven, ordinances affecting code amendments. We also have none of those this evening. Item number eight, originally, if you missed the beginning of the meeting and you're maybe watching at home, we had a topic relative to the Winter Club. That item has been postponed and will be on the agenda for the October 19th, 2015 meeting, two weeks from this evening. Any additional items for council discussion this evening? Alderman Moreno?
I would just like to commend the Public Works Department for saving us money. I, I think that the SSA analysis was very well done, and I apologize for not putting forth my comments when we reviewed the three bids that were presented, but I do think the Public Works Department did a great job, and I'm sure along with other departments in the city, to look at finding a way to do things more efficiently, effectively, and cost-effectively. So, I just want to share that with the council.
Great, thank you. Alderman Adelman?
Yeah, this weekend, for the first time in a while, I had occasion to visit Townline Road, the athletic fields. And I just want to comment that the turf is in fantastic condition. It's lush and thick like a carpet, and some of you were here, you may or may not recall that that turf started life as a really miserable piece of ground, holding water, the grass wasn't taking, and we appropriated money. I think the figure $66,000 sticks in my mind to drill it and fill it. And I think that coupled with the clippings over the last few years have really turned it into a fantastic facility. I'm sorry Sally's not here, and Dan Martin was earlier, but we made the right decision in doing that.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. Have a good evening.